Good evening, and welcome to the March 3rd, 2025 Zoning Board of Appeals meeting at the Great Hall, Town Hall, Court 26 Court Street, Plymouth, Massachusetts. Tonight, we have just one case, a continuation, and before we get started, I'm going to talk a little bit about the procedure, the case, and what's going to happen. As I said when I continued this case the last time, that I would leave public comment open, and it is open, because we are interested in everybody and what they have to say. And as I said before, Mr. Landers has a right to petition this board to do this. So I don't want anybody to think that their rights are superseded by somebody else's. We're trying to keep this on a very, very, very level playing field. So what I'm going to do is to start right out, I'm going to open this to public comment. But before I do that, I would like to, just by a show of hands, see how many people in the audience support this petition. Raise your hands, please. Okay? How many people in this audience oppose this position? It's pretty clear that we understood that, okay? And we've been dealing with this type of, this particular section of town and this property for many years. So we've heard an awful lot about this from people over the years. We've heard the pros, we've heard the cons, we've heard the, all of it. But what I'm going to do is ask that Plymouth residents first speak. We're going to give everyone three minutes, but the minute it gets repetitious, the minute the same thoughts keep coming out, and coming out, and coming out, I'm going to shut it off, because by that time, we're not making any progress. And we have a lot of progress to make this evening. So with that, who would like to start it off? Raise your hand, please. Mr. Smith, please come to the podium. Green light? Okay, thank you.
Now the green light is on. My name is Paul Smith. I live at 127 Ellisville Road, been a resident there for 34 years. I'd like to thank the board for the time, the effort that they put into this. I know it's not without controversy, but not without all of our gratitudes, okay? Out of respect for your time, I'll be brief, okay? My position is that the permit should be denied, and I say this, okay, based on safety, okay? The project, the proposed location is between two town-provided recreational facilities, paid for by the good residents of the town. So these, in a legal term, might suggest there is some liability from having built and endorsed and maintained these recreational facilities, and now to perhaps put this hazard in the middle of it. There is foot traffic from both directions. It's between the Elmer Raymond Playground, okay, and the Hedges Pond Recreation Area. And now we know the haul road comes out in the middle of it, goes along Hedges Pond Road, and then turns down to Route 3, and the return route is the same. We shouldn't forget that the road, the Hedges Pond, is part of the state-designated Clare-Salt and Stoll Bike Way. It was specifically provided, okay, as a result of the good legislature, whose daughter died in a bike-car accident. This bikeway goes all the way from Boston to Providence. It's supposed to allow for a four-foot-wide right-of-way for the bikers as they travel in both directions, okay? My wife and I, okay, I made her do it, okay, she was very patient, okay? We have walked the proposed route from the site to Route 3. We have walked, and it's over broken ground, okay? There's no sidewalks, and we've had to walk single file in many of the places. There's no sidewalks, and there are no traffic controls, even though there are busy intersections that have to be crossed by the cyclists, by the children walking back and forth. Now if we add to this, okay, some 80 trucks a day, or with other proposals legally allowed, but others as well, okay, we're going to have more than 80 trucks a day in direct opposition with our walking citizens and our visitors, our unfamiliar visitors, on their bicycles or in cars, okay? I believe that it puts these people at risk, especially our children, our grandchildren, and as a result of that, I would ask that the permit be denied.
You didn't go over too bad. Humble apologies. Thank you. Someone else?
Good evening. I'm Sybil Holland. I'm a town member rep from Precinct 8. I'll try not to repeat anything that Mr. Smith said. I was a teacher for 42 years. I would often urge my students to ask themselves three questions before they went ahead and said something or did something in certain circumstances. The three questions were: Is it true? Is it kind? And is it necessary? If they could answer in the affirmative to those three questions, then I assure them they should by all means go ahead and say whatever it was and do whatever it was. I'd like to ask those same three questions tonight as it concerns Mr. Landers' request for a special permit. Is it true that all Mr. Landers really wants is a third cranberry bog? Is it kind for the residents of Cedarville, who will be neighbors, not of Mr. Landers, no, but they will be neighbors for years, of trucks, and noise, and dust, and traffic, and the loss of the floor, and the fauna, and the natural environment, as well as the possible danger to our very necessary aquifer? And of course, the final question is: Is it necessary? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak.
Please.
I often...
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Patricia Adelman. I'm a Precinct 12 Chair, and I travel Hedges Pond Road on my way to work. And the reason I oppose this project is because it's altering the landscape. It's taking a bucolic, small cranberry bog and turning it into an industrial-sized agricultural operation. Heavy equipment trucks carrying the earth that is going to be removed will be competing on this hilly, windy road with children on bikes going to Hedges Pond for their summer recreation. Please do not grant this permit. Thank you.
Someone else?
My name is Megan Ash. I'm a resident of Cedarville. I am a citizen of Plymouth and local to Cedarville. My family and I love our local community, and one of the things we love most about where we live is the beautiful, unique environment of the Pine Barrens, of Ellisville Harbor, our local freshwater spring, Hedges Pond, and the surrounding nature trails, and so much more. We are deeply upset at the town's imposition on the Cedarville community to profit off the desecration of sacred indigenous land, to ignore the wishes of our local indigenous leaders, to carelessly destroy ecosystems, to sell our hilly landscape protective to climate change for the profit of sand mining, and to increase traffic and construction in an area that's already plagued by PA landers. We don't want this. We are also concerned about some of the information provided by the town and developers. This project does not seem well-thought-out or curated to the local environment that it's being built in. It seems the plan is to make our little Cedarville town into an even more car- and traffic-centric area, catering to those passing through and not to the local residents who enjoy the local resources and businesses. This whole plan and the process in response to concerns has appeared disingenuous and cynical. The town is literally bulldozing over the wishes of local residents, as well as our indigenous community, who have seen enough land theft and desecration without the town of Plymouth continuing to add insult to injury. We are tired of Plymouth brushing the rights and concerns of local tribal leaders aside. It's offensive and shows a complete lack of consideration for our people that have the deepest roots in this community and in this land. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else?
Koi, wuniki saka. Nata swis, Makaya nu Thomas, Sukwana makapakwe, Wumpana'ak. Hello, my name is Makaya Stasis, and I come from the Herring Pond Wampenhog Tribe here in Plymouth, Massachusetts. I'm here to oppose what you're trying to do today, because what we're talking about is not Hedges Pond Road. We're talking about the great lot. That's a lot where our people have lived for thousands of years. Since 1620, they've been coming off that boat, desecrating our graves, destroying our lands, and clearing out our trees. They've been clear-cutting since the day they got off their boat. And here we are, Plymouth, keeping that history alive. We have sent so many emails, so many calls about these things, and still being ignored. There is no reason that I am, as a 24-year-old woman, standing up here in front of a bunch of grown men that are probably three times the age I am, to have to explain to you how inhumane what you're doing is. So when...
Excuse me. We're not going to get into a discussion about what has harmed or wronged or done for generations and years and stuff. Excuse me.
This is, this is, this is not about, listen, hold on, hold on. Listen, we're not, we're not, we're not talking about...
Stop, please. We're not going to do that. What you're talking about is in, this, this board can't act on it. This board has no authority to even look at what you're talking about.
We're talking about the land right here.
Yes, we're talking about the land, but we're not talking about your ancestors and what we did wrong with them.
It's not about the past. We're talking about the present. You're still doing that, currently.
And the present is, do you have standing? Do you own?
Yes, I have standing, because there was no treaties that were given to you guys to seal our land. What treaty? Enlighten me. Show me. Show me that.
We're...
Enlighten me.
Ma'am, we're not, we're not proposing this or anything. We're just here as a hearing agent.
And you're supposed to be hearing me out, right? As a public comment, correct?
But we can only act on the bylaw, the law. We can't act on, and honest to God, I understand what you're talking about.
Do you?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so why is this still happening?
Please don't insult me.
How am I insulting you? If you understood, why are these things still repeating? Why is history still repeating itself?
Because I can't change them. I do not have the authority. This board does not have the authority to change that.
So if you have no authority, then why are we standing here right now?
We're trying to get through this to see...
I would have been finished talking by now.
And besides that, your time is up.
No, my time didn't, my time started when you started speaking. That's when it stopped. The public comment is, I'm supposed to be able to speak.
Finish your statement, please.
What we're talking about right here is a continuation of what's been going on. There are bodies underneath that land that you are trying to deforest, okay? And if you want to talk about the history, okay, we'll talk about the relatives. What about the four-legged? What about the winged that are in those forests?
We don't do whatabouts.
What?
We don't work on whatabouts. We work on case number 4142, ma'am.
On case number 4241? There are animals that are on that land, right? They're there currently, correct?
How do I know?
You don't know if there's, if there's animals on that land right now? How are you on a board when you don't know if there's animals on the land? I'll give you my three minutes. There you go. Keep doing what you're doing. Repeating history. Good job, Plymouth. Congrats.
All is over, shovel of dirt. Is there someone?
Ma'am, ma'am, if you're not done, I'll eat my minutes to you.
Can we hold the applause down? Let's just get this over with.
All right. I'll be short and sweet. I don't want, Dan Bell, Nine Stetson Court, Precinct 12. Everybody's opposed to this down there. And my, the only thing I wanted to make sure you guys are still aware of is that, in addition to these trucks that are going to be coming in for this, if this gets approved, we've got the one right next to it, all right? And we still also have the bus company, school buses. Every day, 40 buses out of Vinidim Ciro's lot, so...
And 35 trash trucks.
Yeah, so that's all I got.
Someone else? How can I miss?
Hello. My name is Rita Fiorello. I live in West Plymouth.
I live in West Plymouth. So I'm honestly shocked at the way that you just treated my friend. It was extremely rude and nasty. Actually, your whole demeanor is terrible, just so you know. We live in a town that celebrates our heritage all the time, through parades, we have the Jenny, we have all of these people. And, and part of that is our friendship with the Native Americans. So their heritage is also important. You guys, I mean, if we go over to the burial hill with shovels and start digging up those bodies, is that going to be okay? I'm asking, because that's literally what you're doing to these people. And I also have a huge problem with the fact that, you know, we have a nonprofit involved in a lot of this land-selling, the Plymouth Foundation. The guy who runs the nonprofit runs tourism and economic growth for the town of Plymouth. How is that not a huge conflict of interest? It is. There's a lot of shady dealings going on in this town, and we need to stop paying more attention to it. And that includes you guys. That's it.
Thanks for your vote of confidence. Go right ahead. And, but this is getting to where it's all repetitious.
Oh, I thought we all said all three different stuff. All different comments, but one thing. Let's just get this over with, guys.
Late, oh my God.
Hello, everyone. So my name's Caleb Stoloski. Sorry. My name, whoa, my name is Caleb Stoloski. I live at Four Buckskin Path. My wonderful neighbors over there, Randy and Beth, at one point tried to get our community together to pay for a lawyer in order to represent us in this case. And, Mr. Land, I appreciate that you are trying to maintain an even playing field here, is what you, is what you opened with in your remarks. It's my personal belief that this is not an even playing field. I personally don't have the resources, the time, the energy, or the ability to defend my home. I am right between both mining sites. I've grown up here, this is the only place I've known as my home. And to see those trucks leaving every day with pieces of it, when I can't do anything about it, it makes me really scared. Thank you.
Go right ahead. Please, no applause.
My name is Kerry Kearney, I live on Tree Top Way. The, the Anderson Bog is directly southwest of me, which means it's in the direction of the prevailing wind. During that construction project that lasted for a couple of years, it was nothing short of a nuisance. The noise and the dust inside our house and out was just terrible, and there was no getting away from it. And this project is moving a little bit north, it's going to have less impact on me, but it's going to have more impact on some of my neighbors. So I'm asking you to consider that this was a nuisance, I have direct experience with it. This project will be a nuisance, and I'm asking you to deny it.
One of the two of you get up. I don't care.
Hi, my name is Carol Beggus, I live at 21 Buck, 21 Buckskin Path. Can I start with a question to the board?
Just, what have you have...
You had mentioned at the last meeting, at the, at the beginning of it, that you had asked for a traffic study. Has that traffic study been completed?
I can't hear you, ma'am.
Will the traffic study that you had asked for at the first part of the meeting be shared tonight?
The board will get into that later.
I think to go back to some of the basics of this, and I'm sure I'm preaching to the choir, and you already know this, in his letter dated February 26th, Attorney Dombrosio, and I'm sorry if I'm not pronouncing your name right, states that the gravel removal is incidental to the project. The numbers say something else. The total bog area with the new bog that in theory will be built someday is projected to provide a return of about $200,000 a year. Yet they're saying that they're going to spend $15 million to create something that's going to take them almost 100 years to get their return back. I don't think they're spending $15 million for posterity. I think they're spending it in order to get gravel, and it is not incidental to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, yes, ma'am?
Good evening. Martha Votrain, Precinct 4. I'd like to comment on the problem with anyone who's walking in that area. As a former physical therapist who understands and values the ability of every one of us to be able to engage in physical activity, that the ease of walking and biking is one of the best examples of everyday lifestyle that includes physical activity. And I think that the, even if there were sidewalks there that were safe and four-feet-wide passageways for the bikes, it's not a safe situation with all those trucks. For all the years that they're talking about, and the number of trucks that would be going along that walkway, I would recommend that you do not pass this just from that point of view. And I haven't even mentioned directly the issue of any one of those bikers or pedestrians being injured in any way or killed. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else? This side of the room? No one? Okay, who's got their hand? Yep, go right ahead.
Good evening. My name is Elena. I'm a resident of Cedarville. Little funny fact about agricultural use and nuisance. I know as a resident with six little chickens that I cannot have a rooster, because I first need to make sure it doesn't bother my neighbors. I know that if my geese, two of them, just like three months old, bother my neighbors, I had to give them away to Middleboro Farm. I did. I don't have anyone else, and I know not to bother anyone. So if just a rooster, potentially, if I had one, I knew it's not legal. And now we have a big nuisance over several years, traffic, sand, dust, whatever. And you are even thinking if it's possible that it's a nuisance or not. Just think and compare a rooster to that kind of a deal.
Thank you. We're, we are not really hearing any new information. And we're just hearing personal stories, in essence. And we have to have facts to deal with. We're not hearing any, so I'm, please go ahead, but I'm going to shut this off pretty quick.
My name is Randy LaBosier. I'm an abutter to this project. One of these maps, if you put it up there, you'll see my name on it. I live at 67 Quail Run. I'm also an accountant. Between late 80s and early 90s, I worked for Ocean Spray Cranberries. And I've got a lot of knowledge of the cranberry industry and how it works. I know a little bit about the statistics within the cranberry business. What I would tell you is, I did a little research, you know, over the course of the last three years, between '21 and '23, in Massachusetts, the average per-acre harvest was between 150 barrels of cranberries, between 150 and 192 barrels. So the price of cranberries have been going down. The market for cranberries peaked in the late 90s. It went up as high as like $59 a barrel. Right now, the price on cranberries is about $36 to $38 a barrel. So if, in fact, the reality here is that, right now, the bogs that are in that location, there's 17.2 acres of bogs. If you looked at, if, just go on the high side, 192 barrels per acre, you would, you can see that, based on prices in 2022, based on the bog that's there, he made $122,000. If he increases his acreage, he's going to increase it by 9.08, and that's based on these, this information here on this package, which I received from somebody, Carol as a matter of fact. The additional, the additional amount of money he could stand to make, based on that 192, and that's a high side, that 2022 was a good year for, for cranberries, it was a high harvest year. So based on 192 barrels per acre, you add all of that together, on a good year, 2022, he would have made $186,000 on that entire farm. Carol said he's going to spend $15 million to, to create these acres of, you know, additional nine acres of, of bogs. This is no way a profitable business, based on that information. Now, let's talk a little bit about 1.5 million cubic yards of sand and gravel. If you do a Google search, if you do any kind of a logical search out there, what is the price, what is the market value of a cubic yard of sand and gravel in Massachusetts? It's between $12 and $65.
Your, your time is running out, but...
I'm almost done. I'm almost done.
I'll give you another minute.
So between $12 and $65, all right? So let's, let's take the low end, 1.5 million at $12, he stands to make $19.8 million. $19.8 million over the course of eight years is $2.5 million a year. He's not making money on cranberries. It's an unprofitable business. He's making money on the sand and gravel. I'm not saying anything that's new, everybody in this room knows this. I think it's disingenuous, I feel, in my opinion, it's disingenuous, to talk about this in any other manner. It's a strip mine, he wants to create a strip mine, he wants to strip the land of this sand and gravel and make money off of that. I don't, I don't stand back and say he shouldn't make money. I think anybody who's in business needs to make money, otherwise they go out of business. But this is just a bad idea for our land, for our local area, and for, for my property. I feel my property value is going to go into the toilet as a result of this strip mining and all of this stuff.
You have to wrap it up.
I'm done.
Thank you very much. That's information. In the back of the room, but we're going to wrap it up real quick.
First, I want to start by saying, all of our voices are unique and implorant, and my, oh, sorry, Josie Irazari, Plymouth resident. All of our voices are unique and important, and if you're actually listening to what the people are saying, nobody's repeating themselves. So without a doubt, I oppose this project. The indigenous peoples are the original stewards of this land. We should be honoring their wisdom and their land instead of desecrating it. At what point do we stop pillaging the land from the indigenous peoples? The spirit of America is a creed written on our license plate. If stealing and land, the land and dishonoring the indigenous peoples is the spirit of America that you're aiming for, then you're on par with doing just that. At the beginning of this meeting, you said yourself, no one's rights supersede anyone else's. Then why does Mr. Landers get a special permit that clearly goes against the will of these people? So I'll leave you with this. Only when the last tree has been cut down, the last fish has been caught, and the last dream has been poisoned, will we realize we cannot eat money.
All right. We've, we've made enough emotional statements, we've heard enough family situations about this permit, and we have heard some very interesting factual information. But at this point, I'm going to bring this back to the board, because we have to move on. And this is going to be for board discussion for a couple of minutes. Michael?
I think this is going...
Yes, go right ahead. And only...
Or is it the attorney?
The attorney, please. And then I'm going to shut it off.
Thank you, good evening.
And you have three minutes.
Thank you, I'm aware of that. Can you, can everyone hear me okay? Thanks. We represent Save the Pine Barrens, which, as you may know, is a non-for-profit corporation who's, I'm sorry, thank you, I'm Attorney Nathaniel Stevens from...
Turn your microphone on or speak closer to it, or...
Is that better? Thanks, okay, thanks. I'll start over again. I'm Attorney Nathaniel Stevens from Reggaria Legere &amp; Stevens in Boston. I represent Save the Pine Barrens, which, as you may know, is a not-for-profit corporation that's, whose purposes include preserving, protecting, and stewarding the lands of Eastern Massachusetts, including the rare pine barrens ecosystem, which is partially, partially on this project site, as well as the Plymouth Carver Soul Source Aquifer, which is below the site, which provides groundwater for over 150,000 people. We submitted letters in opposition dated December 16th and February 14th. Even with the project changes, which we've reviewed, the project still fails to meet the requirements for special permit. The project is not appropriate for the rural residential zoning district, whose purpose is to preserve the natural rural character of present, of the presently rural areas of the town. While cranberry agriculture might be a part of Plymouth's rural, rural character, earth mining certainly is not. Also, the applicant has not shown that there will be no hazard to pedestrian, pedestrians or vehicles, as detailed in a letter from Fussin O'Neill, which was also submitted on December 16th, and Ms. Tyler DeRuder, an engineer, is here to speak about that. We understand that a traffic consultant has been engaged, and we hope to hear about more, more, more about that this evening. The project also will be a nuisance and have adverse effect on the neighborhood, as you've heard from many of the people speaking this evening. And the project meet, fails to meet additional standards. The project's duration exceeds two-year, the two-year limit, which is set in your bylaw, and the project fails to conserve natural features. By excavating, removing about 50 acres of land and forest to depths of at least, at least 50 feet, this is hardly conserving the natural features and instead consumes them. And the project is not in harmony with its surroundings. As you know, there are many residential properties within the area. Attorney Dombrosio's letter said, that he submitted last week or the week before, said that incidental is not defined in the, in the zoning bylaw. One of the cases we cite does provide some guidance to this board about what incidental means. And from the old colony council, Boy Scouts versus this zoning board, in fact, the court says incidental is a term which, when used in the context of zoning, often incorporates the, incorporates the concept that the use must not be the primary use of the property, but rather which is subordinate and minor insignificance. The ordinary lexicon meaning of incidental also connotes something minor and of lesser importance.
Sir, your time is up.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, for these reasons, we ask that you oppose the, deny the permit.
So now, I'm going to shut public comment off, quote, point here, and bring this back to the board. I believe that the vice chair would like to weigh in.
Exactly. I'm going to motion that we deny case 4142 without prejudice, on the advice of town council, because the changes that are putting forth on this are too substantial and need to be, oh, excuse me, resubmitted and go through the review process again. So that's my motion.
Second? All right. Before we vote on this motion, what Michael just did was make a motion to deny this permit. And I must tell you, this board has been through an awful lot about this permit. We've had people call our houses. I live in Cedarville, and people walk by my house all the time because I live where they can, near a place to watch the ocean. And every one of them that see me know me, and I have to listen to this. And I've had threats. And wait, wait, wait. Are you through? Okay, let's take the vote. All those in favor of Michael's... Okay, let's take the vote. All those in favor of, uh, Michael's motion, vote aye. To deny. All those in favor...
To deny without prejudice.
Without prejudice, and that means, without prejudice, folks, that he can tomorrow morning go right back and refile this. But what this means is there's such a significant change, and that's what I was trying to get to before you got a little testy. Um, but at any rate, there's such a significant change between what was advertised for this case and what he is now proposing. There are topographical changes. There are drainage changes. There are amounts of fill to come out. There are so many significant changes that we, we can't make a, an honest decision on what is presented here tonight. It just, it's two entirely different things, and we're not allowed to do that.
Let's just do the vote.
The vote is, all those in favor? It is unanimous. This case has been dismissed. Well, he thought we were such...
Renee was gonna be a little contentious. Think he should've let her vote just then?
You should've let them say something.
I was gonna make a comment.
Please to your board, I'm talking about kids.
Yeah.
If you're, if you're not here for the next thing, we're not answering any more questions about this. It's over with. Please clear the room. We have business to take care of.
Nope.
No, but it gets rid of it.
But, um, I can't be here because, you know, she, she did talk to him. It's too substantial. It's too many. What was this in nature?
Yeah. That's a, I just said it was a little prearranged.
I don't propose these things. And I'm having to say, you should be...
It's interesting. You can make, make it smaller, but they've changed a number of things in the topography.
Right. And that, and that's because the way we act was that, but they would say both, and it wasn't just one. It was A and, and A and B both.
Well, they don't, they don't count as...
We, we gotta move on. We have internal business. Our internal business. Would I have some minutes to take care of? No, it's nothing to do with anything of you folks. That's why I wanted the room cleared. I've been tonight blamed of trying to... Well, you know, you've been there too. Please. Just please.
We gotta finish.
Step away from the, please.
I had, I, my, my... Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Um, could we just address, uh, we had talked about a new start time?
Yes.
And I think, uh, is, we are agreed on that, right?
Yes.
But when, when will we start the meetings now at six o'clock, Denise? In April? Is that what we said?
April seventh, we'll start six o'clock meetings.
Okay, so we have one more meeting at the old time?
And there's a second thing that we have to discuss tonight, and that's going digital. There are going to be two classes. There are computers for people who don't have them, laptops. And, and there are gonna be, it's either, what is it, March this, tomorrow? The fourth?
Uh, tomorrow, four to six. March eighteenth, four to six.
And then everything from then on?
Um, Friday, April fourth. I, I think it was at ten. I didn't write the time down. Sorry.
This is going over...
So, we don't have any more large plans?
No. And that was one thing that...
Jason, is this your doing?
Course it is. He brought Kingston with him.
Excuse me?
So...
My understanding that...
Uh, excuse me.
I don't can see this eye.
Excuse me. We're not taking any public comment right now.
Can you speak into the microphone so we can hear you? This is a public meeting.
We understand that, and we're speaking into the microphone.
Is it...
Well, get closer, I guess, 'cause I'm speaking into the microphone. What do you want me to, eat it?
Enough! I just wanna get this over with, ma'am. Yes, Peter, go right ahead.
So, we no longer have the opportunity to look at full-size plans?
They will be here at the meeting, or we can come to Town Hall.
Yeah, not, yeah. Okay. That's what I thought.
Yep, yep.
Okay.
Yep.
But we were, we're gonna have to let you know if we want a full-size plan ahead of time, right? No?
So, I understand it. We don't get them. We come here to look at them.
Oh, whoa.
Is that, is that correct, Jason?
That's what I'm, I'm being told, and I'm, I, I don't know how well that's gonna work, because I know what you do and you do, and Michael does, and I, we spread them out on our table.
Yeah.
And then we take, all right, this portion, and it talks about this portion of the blueprint, but where is the snow going on this? You try and do that on a fifteen-by-fifteen screen.
Yeah, I know.
You can't do it. But this is what, this is the twenty-first century, so... Anything else?
No, that's it. I, I thought that was the case.
Motion?
So, when are the, you said there was those classes, um, one tomorrow? Yeah.
I'll email you.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. And I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
This motion, this meeting is closed.